All right, let's call this meeting in order. Josh, would you mind doing the pledge for us?
Please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have invocation by Troy Stanley, pastor of First Christ Lutheran Church.
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you so much for this day. Thank you for the blessing to live in such a beautiful place. Thank you for the dry weather now that things can dry out. Father, ask a blessing on our leaders here tonight, that they can make decisions that honor you and bring safety and health and prosperity to this community. Guide and direct us always. Help us to love each other more every day and to love you with our heart, all of our heart, mind, body, and soul. Our Father, may it be our honor to make a difference in this world for you. Forgive us where we fall short, in Jesus' name. Amen.
City Clerk Roche Hall.
Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Hutcheson.
Here.
Commissioner Tomolte.
Here.
Vice Mayor Williams. Mayor Kapizzi.
Here. Can I get someone to make a motion for the agenda?
Let's approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. We have a special presentation for some very special ladies. For the Cocoa Beach Women's Club. The Cocoa Beach Women's Club was established on September 7th, 1965, and chartered by the General Federation of Women's Clubs Florida on September 24th, 1965. As a service organization addressing and enhancing the lives of others through volunteer service, and whereas throughout the club's 60-year history has contributed not only to the Cocoa Beach and Cape Canaveral areas, but also to all citizens of Brevard County through its support of education, arts, and culture, our environment, civic duties, health, and wellness. And whereas the club sponsored the first Cocoa Beach Senior Citizens Club, the forerunner for Freedom Seven Senior Center, was instrumental in procuring sidewalks on the north side of Minuteman Causeway, provided scholarships for police and fire training, contributed over half a million dollars towards the building and furnishings of the Cocoa Beach Country Club and Community Center, and hosted its grand opening in 1992, hosted by the city of Cocoa Beach's 80th anniversary party. And whereas, the Cocoa Beach Women's Club assisted in the development of Fisher Park, Jetty Park, and Bicentennial Park, lobbied for the preservation of the hammock at Lori Wilson Park, founded the Right Whale Watch Program, is a founding member of the Bowen Aquarium, supports the Drown Zero Project and the Women's Center of Brevard. And whereas, the club has been official, an official sponsor of the Space Coast Arts Festival since 1968, supports the Cocoa Beach Art Festival since 1968, donated to the Cocoa Beach Library Building Program and supports it annually, edited and published Out of This World Cookbook, One and Two, selling over 30,000 copies worldwide, collected and sent teddy bears to refugee children in Kosovo, collected and delivered 90 tons of supplies with the help of Patrick Air Force Base to the victims of Hurricane Betsy, supports the Cocoa Beach Police and Fire Departments, supports the Cocoa Beach Citizens Academy, and whereas, over the past 60 years, has given scholarships to Brevard County high school students and women reentering the workforce, contributes to the Cocoa Beach Junior and Senior High School Band, Chorus, Orchestra, and Project Graduation, sponsors students to attend the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Program, supports Cocoa Beach Junior Senior High School Teacher Appreciation Week, recognizes outstanding elementary students, volunteers, and sponsors Special Olympics, supports and volunteers at local events. And therefore, I, Keith Kapizzi, the mayor of Cocoa Beach, Florida, do hereby join the commissioners of Cocoa Beach, along with our community, in expressing appreciation to the Cocoa Beach Women's Club for their loyal and dedicated service and extending best wishes on their 60th anniversary proclaimed this 16th day of October 2025. Thank you, girls. And if you'd like to come up and say something, you're welcome, and I've got some proclamations for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to invite you all to our reception that we're having on the 25th, from 2 to 4, be pulling out our memorabilia and having it at the country club. And then April, we're gonna have a gala, so we'll have to pay some money.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Do you guys want to get a picture with the commission? Yeah.
Okay.
Should we go down there?
Thank you for your patience.
Well, this is very special.
Certainly is. We'll do another five or 10 years. We can use my camera. I'll take them. You're in the picture there. I don't care. I'll get that in there. I'll stand by Tim. There it goes. Let me get some photos. You're welcome. Congratulations. Thank you, thanks very much. That's right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you. I saw that, that was nice.
I'm gonna hurt a little more history.
Oh, my gosh, that would have been 20 minutes. We'd have been 20 minutes on that. I remember the first woman's club, 60 years ago.
All right, let's see. See, number two, recognition of exceptional service presented by Chief Wes Mullins, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, commission, city attorney, city manager, city clerk. Can I have Chief Grimes up here and Deputy Chief Kewen as well, first? So we decided as a staff, as a public safety staff collectively, to honor a couple of our folks this evening for some over and above and beyond work that they did to help a needy family. I'll just kind of start that way. Recently, and we kind of feel like these collaborative efforts should be recognized. So with that said, if I could have Corporal Miranda, Officer Wurda, and Officer Sherrig up, please, as well. Please come on up. So I have something that I'm actually gonna read, and then Chief Grimes will speak for a bit, and then I'll kind of close this out. So just kind of let everybody know what happened here. On September 14th, 2025, Corporal Javier Miranda, Officer Jacob Wurda, and Officer Henry Sherrig encountered a mother with an infant sitting at a bus stop after hours. Concerned for their safety, the officers initiated a consensual contact and learned that the woman had recently become homeless and lacked the means to care for herself and her child. During the interaction, they noted the mother and child had very limited food and supplies. Recognizing the urgency of the situation, Corporal Miranda, Officer Sherrig, and Officer Wurda compassionately paid for a night's stay at a local motel for the mother and the child out of their own pockets to ensure that the family had a safe place to sleep for the night. They also purchased a small amount of groceries, specifically water and milk for the child as well. The following morning, the Cocoa Beach Police Department Patrol Division collaborated with Sherri Mahaffey, the city's community paramedic, who then reached out to local businessman and volunteer Steve Hoskins to secure an extended stay of more than a week. This extended stay and generosity provided the mother time to connect with local nonprofit organizations for continued support. The actions of these officers and community partners exemplify the highest standards of compassion, teamwork, and community policing in serving the most vulnerable members of our community. Okay? So, please.
Thank you, chief. I just want to let you guys know too, Sherri, she's such an asset. And the officers work so good with her, they communicate whenever we have these issues because sometimes we don't know what to do. You know, we're right there at the very beginning with the initial contact, and what do we do afterwards? Well, Sherri has volunteers throughout the city. Steve Hoskins, who, Sherri and both Steve aren't here tonight, but he's been an integral part of helping. Not only does he help with Sherri, but with some of the things he does, he does, helps us some of the handyman stuff. He takes residents to their doctor's appointments, and he also, we have one of our residents that uses Sherri services that's blind, and he takes them out to lunch and things like that. So it's just a, it's just a really good to see the public safety, along with our own residents, all working together for the betterment of the community. So I just wanted to add that, so, thank you, chief.
So to kind of close it out, this is kind of what we do here. This is what we're about. We don't get to put this out there very often, and we should put it out more. This is what Cocoa Beach is about, community partnerships, public-private partnerships, and collaboration between our public safety personnel. So we just appreciate these officers, we appreciate Sherri very much, Justin Schopp and his folks, and especially the local business owners here who very often reach out a helping hand for all of us. So I just wanted to say thanks, so.
Thank you for making us look good, which makes me look good.
Gee, thank you for making sure that that got highlighted, and to each one of our folks, just incredible.
All right, any public comments about items that are not on the agenda? All right, moving along, staff reports.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, of course, we're all well aware, last week we had a flood event. We had five and a half inches of rain. The Indian River Lagoon water levels are high. The rain occurred at King Tide. We have high groundwater levels, and we had localized flooding in the Woodland Cedar Areas, 4th Street South, Country Club and the Cocoa Beach Country Club areas, the west side of South 11th Street, sections of Ocean Beach Boulevard, in the north end, Jack and Bright Waters, and around State Road 520 at the river, the Island Time Restaurant. The restaurants in that area, we had high water. We had infiltration into the sewer lines from groundwater that resulted in the sewer plant being near capacity, and we asked residents to cut back on water so that we'd have an opportunity to have the plant reduce the amount of water that it had in it. The one thing that I think we sometimes forget about is the stormwater fund is an enterprise fund. It's paid for by the utility bill. The funding for stormwater issues comes from the stormwater bill and not from property taxes. Right now, we have a citywide multi-decade vulnerability assessment program going on. It's being conducted by GeoSynTech engineers. The target for completion of this assessment, which is required by the state, is June of 2026, and we'll have an update for the commission at the December 4th meeting. The study is conducted through a grant from FDEP and also funds from the ARPA program. So there are no quick fixes to the flooding. It's going to take a while. We have, we have programs in place in localized areas, Woodland and Brevard Avenue, that area over there, we've got plans, but the fixes, which involve bigger pipes, more pipes, more outfalls, and backflow preventers to prevent the river from backing up into the streets, which is a part of the problem. But that program is scheduled for completion in 2027, so we can hope that we don't have the type of rains that we had the last week. If any of you were here for Hurricane Fay, that was a three or four-day rain event, and it was much worse than what we had last week. On other items, the waste management contract is coming up for renewal. We're in the last, coming, in 2026 will be the last year of the current contract. It will expire on 12/31/26, and the intent of the staff is to take it out to RFP unless we hear otherwise from the commission. We want to take it out to bid. There are other companies that would be bidding on the waste management, the solid waste, trash pickup. So if there are concerns with going that route, then please give me a heads up. Other upcoming events in November, we have the art show, we're gearing up for the art show. We've been working with Commissioner Tomolte and Steve Romano. And we also have our first Movies in the Park coming in December on the grassy green, which ought to be a really nice kids-type event. The Polar Express cartoon movie will be our first show. And then finally, project statuses, Ramp Road Park, we're breaking ground on that project on October 27th. That will close that park for three to six months. Bicentennial Park is scheduled for completion on December 31st, and that's moving along well. We have the downtown garage elevator project, which I know the public is anxious about. That is starting November 10th and should take probably into December before that's completed. We're replacing the whole cab on the elevator. The Cocoa Beach Country Club Golf Course, the Dolphin Nine will be closed for six weeks starting November 7th to replace the irrigation system on that nine. The Holiday Lane Boat Ramp is a project that we've started now. The survey, the survey's been done, and now we need to wait for the water to go down a little bit so that the contractor can begin working on that. And then finally, the tennis court project, the fencing has been taken down, the lights have been taken down, the contractor is milling the four new tennis courts, and that's moving along. So that's my report. Any questions?
Any word on the sign on the building? Cocoa Beach sign.
The photo that you showed me?
Yeah.
Well, we don't know how that happened, honestly.
Is it fixed?
I believe it is. It's an anomaly. We do not know how that happened.
Okay.
What was the issue?
The lighting.
I mean, the light was out, or it was?
A couple of the lights were out.
I'll show you a picture of it.
Selective ones.
Yeah. It was a little embarrassing for the city, in my opinion. Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
I had a question, city manager. So on the CBNN, great job, the staff, you know, it's an effective communication tool on the, has, you know, the do not flush and encouraging. I have a question, do we, could we ever get in a situation where, like, it's mandated we don't flush? And I ask that only because I had a couple neighbors that don't get CBNN, and they were not even aware of the request to limit laundry, limit, you know, shower time, et cetera. So I didn't know, capacity-wise, could we ever get into, like, a mandated, and how would that be communicated out?
I mean, that's a good question. You know, how do you please...
You flush the toilet, yeah. Yeah. I was honestly surprised, because I think the CBNN is a great tool, it's good updates for relevant stuff, and...
I mean, it seemed like the cooperation was great. And we were able to...
I think the sign, too, the sign that you put out there, I think, felt...
Oh, that's right, it was on the marquee sign.
Yeah.
I was just curious if it, like I said, I had a couple, two different individuals that said, I weren't aware of it, so I didn't know if we get, and that was not, like you said, nothing like Fay. I mean, it was high, but that was not a Fay event, so, thank you.
That is a good question, but, you know, the whole concept is to minimize the, or lessen the amount of water coming in, and I think that that works. We did have that situation with Hurricane Matthew in 2016 where our water treatment facility was down, and unfortunately, the county allowed, said, hey, the bridges are open, everybody come back in, and we were not prepared for that. So we tried to get it out there, hey, what's the first thing you're gonna do coming home from a hurricane is take a shower? You know, go to the bathroom, take a shower, right? So we're, fortunately, we, you know, got it back up and running, and now we have generators out there. But it also went CBNN, but it also went on Facebook and other media sources, folks put it out there. So that was, it was a, it was a good, good move in getting that information, like Commissioner said, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you taking over for Skip. Just joking. City Attorney.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
At this point?
Hey.
Yeah, City Attorney, sorry about that.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing, okay. City Commission?
I'm good.
All right, anything?
Oh, yeah. Of course, of course I do.
There we go.
Yes, so, this rain we got was Friday, right in the middle, or right at the beginning of National Kidney Foundation Surf Contest. I'm surprised you didn't mention anything about that, Mayor, because you won one of the divisions, I believe.
I did, yeah.
And also, out at the country club, when we got all that rain, it was a little scary for everybody out there because the roads started to flood, the school had just, was just being let out. I was at the school at 3:30 when all the rain, you know, was really coming down, it actually flooded the school. None of the rooms got damaged, but the water was actually filling up in the commons and going in the hallways. So they, fortunately, it receded there, but the roads were still flooded, and the golf course looked, you know, I live on Fairway, it looked like I had waterfront property all of a sudden. It was water all the way across. And again, fortunately, that went down over the next 12 to 24 hours, it dropped down to really a high level. But I also want to mention that NKF, yeah, that was out at the beach, but also the silent auction at the country club on Sunday, so they had to work through all that. Roy, Ed, Brent, Andy did a fantastic job in supporting NKF. My wife's the chair of the silent auction, has been for about 10, 10 years or so. Not only that, there was a wedding going on Saturday, that the, there was a 50-year class reunion that had an event out there Saturday afternoon, so there was a lot going on in the midst of all this chaos and rain and whatnot. But Roy especially did an amazing job out there. He was playing, he set himself up to potentially spend the night out there if he needed to because he knew he was gonna be there late Saturday and have to be back in by seven or so in the morning. I think he went home though, but, for a short period of time, but just want to give him kudos for doing a great job.
He was a great employee.
He is, he is, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, basically, just mirror everything Tim said. We had, it was such a cool, last week was a pretty cool week, we had so much stuff going on. We had a concert down here, that was really cool, for the NKF party as well. But, yeah, and the guys did an excellent job, as always, at the country club, so, thank you, Roy, and your team for that. All right, let's move on, consent agenda.
Okay, this is the consent agenda. Item one, approve the October 2, 2025, Commission Minutes. Staff representative, city clerk department recommendation approved. Item two, adopt resolution number 2025-31, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Cocoa Beach, Florida, amending garbage, waste, and trash fees, providing for interpretation and for an effective date. Resolution number 2025-31 implements a 5.39% rate increase, effective in January 2026, seen in the February 2026. seen in the February 2026 Utility Bill. The current contract with Waste Management for Solid Waste Services runs from 2021 to 2026 and has an escalation clause allowing rate adjustments linked to the Consumer Price Index, CPI. The last consumer rate, customer rate increase was applied in January 2025 in the amount of 4.59%. Staff Representative Brad Calzo, Public Works Water Rec Director, Hannah Jewman, Finance Director, recommendation approve.
Move to approve. H. Consent Agenda is read.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mayor, can I just say something real quick about H. Two? So the City Manager alluded to the contract. I don't want, unfortunately, we negotiated this contract. It was already built in. It would be this 5% raise, so we're not voting, there's nothing we can not vote on tonight to prohibit that raise. So I've committed to you guys. I talked to the City Manager about negotiating. I'm definitely in favor of bidding this out to get extra options when it comes up, but built into their five-year contract was this renewal rate. So we're approving it, but there's nothing really that we can do. It's already under contract. Hopefully, we'll get better terms on the next. Like I said, I've talked to the City Manager. We can bid this out. I'm definitely in favor of that shopping around. So, thanks, Mayor.
We're all on the same page on that. All right. New business.
Okay, item one, accept the engineer's recommendation of award for the bid submitted by R&amp;M Service Solutions LLC in the amount of $702,042 for bid number CB25-006, Port Canaveral Force Main Air Release Valve Replacement Project. Allow staff to enter into contract with R&amp;M Service Solutions LLC. This is a budgeted capital project eligible for state revolving funds. Staff Representative Brad Calzo, Water Reclamation and Public Works Director, recommendation approve.
Move to approve. J. One is read.
Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Any commission comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Number two.
Okay, item two, approve Task Order Number Six with Kimberly Horn and Associates, Inc. to provide construction phase services for Project CB25-001, Lift Stations Three, Six, and Fifteen rehabilitation in the amount of $104,390. This is a budgeted capital project. Staff Representative Brad Calzo, Public Works and Water Reclamation Director, recommendation approve.
J. Two is read.
Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Any commission comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Three.
Okay, item three, approve the purchase of a new pool liner from Reno Sis in the amount of $181,965. This is a budgeted capital item. Staff Representative Andy Segarra, Leisure Services Director, recommendation approve.
Move to approve. J. Three is read.
Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Any commission comment?
Yeah, just real quick. Andy, great job getting three quotes. You know I'm a stickler for getting multiple bids, so kudos. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Five, four, oh. Number four.
Okay, item four, requesting commission direction regarding which meeting should be conducted, rescheduled, or canceled during the upcoming holiday period while ensuring compliance with the requirement to hold a minimum of one regular meeting per month. Current meeting dates, November 6, November 20. City Hall closure Thanksgiving, November 27 and 28. December 4, December 18. City Hall closure Christmas holiday, December 24 and 25. January 1, New Year's Day, City Hall closure. Staff Representative A.J. Hudson, City Manager, recommendation, provide direction to staff regarding the City Commission's preferred holiday meeting schedule.
I'll make a motion to cancel November 20, December 18, and January 1.
Second.
I think we can get, and my logic there is I think we've got a pretty good rhythm. We're getting good feedback. We can accomplish the month's worth of work in one meeting, and I think that'll give staff some relief on holidays.
Since I don't think we have anything real pressing or controversial coming up, so I think that's feasible. Okay, you got a motion?
Got a second.
You got a second?
Do you want to get a public comment?
Yeah. Any public comment on that? Any other commission comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, item five, approve Ordinance 1706 on First Reading, an ordinance of the City of Cocoa Beach, Florida, Amendment Article Three, Civil Citations of Chapter Thirty, Code Enforcement, Special Magistrate, Code Enforcement Board, Civil Citations of the Code of Ordinances, providing for updates to civil citation provisions, making findings, providing for adoption of revisions by reference, providing for codification, conflict severability, scrivener's errors, and an effective date. Staff Representative David Dickey, Development Services Director, recommendation approve.
I move to adopt Ordinance 1706 on First Reading. Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Any commission comment?
I think it might be worth, just for the public to understand a little bit of this. City Manager, would you be able to just give a brief summary on what this does?
We have a process in place, or had a process in place whereby when a civil citation was issued, the recipient of the citation, the remedy for protesting or appealing that citation was to go before the Circuit Court. So what we found is the Circuit Court kind of puts civil citations at the bottom of the list.
Or not on the list.
And we've had, in some cases, we've had the city attorney sit there for eight hours and not have the case heard, and it turned into a costly waste of time. So what we did, what Dave Shop did, was we revised the citation form. So on the citation form, it says the remedy to appeal the citation is to bring it before the special magistrate rather than the Circuit Court. A special magistrate is a local judge who comes and hears cases in city hall here and renders a decision without having to go through the Circuit Court in Viera and all that. So that's essentially what this ordinance change does. It substitutes the special magistrate for the Circuit Court process.
If I could just say, it's the county court, not the Circuit Court. Yes, but that is true. We showed up, there was a notice for a hearing at 8:00 a.m., and we had a code enforcement officer, we had two police officers and myself. We sat there all day until 4:30, and the judge looked out at us and said, "You might want to try tomorrow morning. See if I, see if I'll have time for you." So that just doesn't work.
I just wanted to highlight, I think this is smart by the city, them doing a good job.
And then also, is there a financial difference between the two?
Well, I don't know that we could ever be successful in getting a hearing before the county court. So as a result, when people would be appealing these things, the cases were dismissed, which was an unfortunate situation. Now we'll be able to either collect the money on the citations, or if they do appeal it, then it will go to the special magistrate.
It cuts down on a lot of labor and just delays and et cetera.
Oh, absolutely. It just makes more sense. And when I went through here, I tweaked, well, for one thing, there were a lot of references to the Code Enforcement Board, which we do not use anymore, so I removed that, and just basically cleaned up the ordinance.
Do we pay a fee for the magistrate?
Yes. Yes, we do. We pay him...
Is that a set fee, or is it on time, or?
It is, it is, I'm trying to remember the amount. It's a dollar amount per time he shows up. So we could have 15 items in front of him or one, but it's very difficult to get someone to do a special magistrate job if they think that if they drive all the way over here, they might just have a 15-minute hearing. And I don't think we've ever had that, frankly. But this is something that works, and it's used pretty uniformly in cities. Some cities do pay it hourly, but then it's hard to find really talented people who want to come out and do that.
We're paying for the event when he comes out. We might as well load up his agenda with more items.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the trade-off is we're avoiding a whole bunch of staff time, sitting in here overtime, just doing nothing.
And not, and not ever getting heard.
Right, right.
And the fees for the fines should pay for the magistrate as well, right?
Absolutely, it should.
Yeah, okay.
Speaking of avoiding staff time, maybe, and this is, sorry, getting off subject, but maybe we can move our meetings up a little bit so that the folks that start their day at 7:00 in the morning aren't here till 10:00 in the evening for some meetings and 8:00 on a normal meeting if we get out. So just a thought. And also, some of the county commission has a meeting once a month, I think, during the day. Just throwing it out there. We'll talk about it another time, but that's the subject. We'll stay on this.
All right, we did a first and a second, public comment and commission comment. So are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, we are adjourned.